I Hate Politics is a podcast about a human activity we love to hate. And this is the I Hate Politics candidate interview with Brandy Brooks for Montgomery County Council at large. If we hate politics, what about politicians? Bring up Congressman Jamie Raskin in Southern Montgomery County, and you will see that we only hate politicians we don't agree with. Andy Harris, for example, the Congress member from Maryland's District One, who saw a little wrong with the January 6th insurrection. He's now been challenged by Democrat Heather Missouri. But let us not forget that a plurality of people in District One voted him into office. How do supporters of Jamie Raskin and Andy Harris live together in the same state? Or even the same country? That is the challenge politics is supposed to solve, no less. I'm Sunil Dasgupta, host of I Hate Politics podcast. Rather than your usual candidate forum with 20 questions covering the range of issues and limiting candidates to soundbite answers. The I Hate Politics candidate interview is an in-depth discussion about one issue that the candidate has chosen. If they didn't choose, I chose for them the issue where I thought they were strongest. My conversation with Brandy Brooks focused on participatory policymaking. As the term suggests, participatory policymaking, sometimes also called participatory governance, places emphasis on citizen input, particularly from groups and individuals historically excluded from policymaking and power sharing. Brooks has been an organizer since she moved to Montgomery County many years ago and worked on community engagement and empowerment across various issues, including land use, food, and environmental justice. This interview won't answer all your questions about her, but it will give you an insight into her thinking about the role of government and how she interprets democratic governance. Music for this episode comes from Carol Levchenko, an Arlington singer-songwriter who is the choir director in Centerville High School in Fairfax County, Virginia. Brandy Brooks, welcome to I Hate Politics.
Thank you so much. It's such a pleasure to be here.
You identified participatory policymaking as the subject matter for this interview. Why did you choose it? And in particular, if you can speak to why you chose a process issue over a substantive issue, usually voters care about substantive issues, but you chose a process issue. Why?
Absolutely. And it's a great question. And we often, when we talk about politics, focus on the what we want to get done. And that's incredibly important, really determining what are the key issues in our communities and how we want to talk about them. But what we don't talk about as often, yet it's just as important, is the how of how we do things. And that how is as much an expression of our values as the what. And in fact, the how significantly shapes the outcomes that we get out of policy processes. And especially when we're dealing with things, you know, the county has made a commitment to racial equity and social justice. That's very much, it's a what question. But there's a lot of the how in how decisions have been made in ways that have been designed to marginalize and exclude and exploit community members. And that are still, honestly, we're still trying to figure out how to shift from systems that do that. So we have to talk about what it means to make those shifts and to recognize that it's not just the content, but the process.
So I'm a political scientist.
Okay.
And I, you know, learned about democratic theory. Democratic theory, the process, is in itself participatory, right? That is the entire raison for, for the democratic process. Clearly, you have some dissatisfaction with the democratic process that you want participation as a separate idea. It's almost as if democracy is not participatory, or at least not participatory enough.
Well, I mean, I think one of the things you know as a political scientist is that we've been having the debate since the founding of the United States as a nation about how much democracy do we really want? This was an active conversation among the founders about, you know, what's the balance between letting, quote, "the rabble" lead and, you know, aristocracy? And so trying to figure out where we fell on that. And most of how we think about democracy, certainly in the modern age, is pretty limited to voting. And voting's an important first step for determining who the people are who sit in elected offices, you know, year-round or seasonally, depending on how we structure them. But there's a lot of other places where decision-making happens about how things go within our governance that goes well beyond voting. And, you know, as a student of public administration, so that's what I got my master's degree in, I also sort of know about the tradition of public administration in the United States, which is very much a, you know, we need the professionals to take care of this and provide the guidance to make sure that we get to good policy. Because we don't really, there's an underlying thing there that says we don't really believe that regular people can or even should be involved in those processes of figuring out what we do. And I think, I'll just say this, my experience, certainly my experience as a Black woman, my experience as someone who, you know, hasn't come from wealth and has had to face economic struggles and challenges, is that that way of making decisions is, doesn't serve me very well. It is often produced injustice and inequity and systems that aren't designed to support me or my family or people who look like me in truly living into our well-being and our aspirations. And so I think we absolutely need a different way of doing our political process. Because right now, the results that we're getting aren't good enough for a huge number of people in our communities.
Well, so my question is, yes, I agree with almost all of what you said. If you want to fix the political process, fix the political process, right? Do you think participatory policymaking fixes the political process?
So I think this is also getting into that question of what is politics? And again, politics is more than just electoral politics. You know, again, this is the way that we tend to define politics, is it's what happens at the ballot box. That is the start of politics. The political process is the process by which we make decisions about the rules that govern our society. So I do believe that participatory policymaking is about fixing that political process, but also making sure that we understand that politics extends far beyond what we do every year or two years or four years in November.
Well, let me push you on that a little. So in political science, at least in 1971, Robert Dahl, the great political scientist, wrote this monograph called Poliarchy. And where he showed that, no, the political process does not stop at the ballot box. So in fact, that there are multiple ways and channels of political influence, you know. Voting with your feet is one thing, right? So people move from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, that's one way of doing politics. You know, we do checkbook politics. We do politics out in the streets that are sort of outside the usual institutional scope of politics. So there have been many, many, and there's a recognition that politics extends beyond the ballot box. My question is, is this a continuation of those kinds of things? Is participatory politics a, an extension of that kind of idea? Or is it a completely new thing?
I'll say it's a different thing. I don't think it's new because I think it's something that, there are different ways that human communities throughout history have had different ways of making decisions about governing their lives. So we happen to experience Western democracy, but that's not the only way that people have made decisions about their lives throughout history. And there are many examples of people doing that in a, in a more communal and more direct way. But talking about, you know, what you were just referring to, most of the ways that you just talked about are very indirect ways to shape policy. The voting with your feet one is actually a terrible one for, for someone. It means that in order to get better policy, you literally have to leave your home and go somewhere else. So that, the idea that that is somehow democracy and policy shaping is actually not something that, that we want to encourage or something that many people can do is just to move around until they find the right place where policy will suit them. Even checkbook politics, again, tends to favor people with bigger bank accounts. And then direct, and direct action, you know, sort of the, the politics in the streets, along with the other two, are very reactionary. They're not actually going in and having the opportunity to shape policy from the outset to shape how it's implemented. That's a very different kind of politics, and that's the politics, I think, that we need. Not just having to, getting, having to react at the end to whatever comes down, but getting to shape it along the way.
Do you have any historical examples you just mentioned about communal way of organizing politics that you admire?
Let's see. The, one of the ones that, that comes to mind for me that I think is a little bit different are systems of water management, actually in the American Southwest from, from Native American populations. And, and I'm not going to go into this story too much in detail because there are folks who could do this a lot better than I can. But just the, the idea that there is a way of thinking about water management in a watershed that is so different from how we manage water now and was much more collective and people coming together to negotiate how water needed to be used all along the course of this waterway. And again, doing it in a much more communal, community-centered way. That's the first example that popped into my mind, but I think
That's a good one, actually.
It's a good one. And there, you know, it's, that's public infrastructure and, you know, essential public utilities that can be done in a very different way. I also think about the New England town meeting. So as someone who was, was, lived for a long time in Massachusetts, there's still a tradition there of town meetings where the whole town gets together annually and makes big public policy decisions that we normally, that in a lot of other places are delegated to administrators and to legislators. So we still have some of these kinds of traditions of people getting in and making significant public policy decisions together that have come throughout our history here in, in the land that we, we currently call the United States. Additionally, there are some, I think, really important examples of how people are doing participatory policymaking now that, that we can continue to be learning from and implementing. One great example, the consulting organization where I'm a co-director is called One Square World. And our firm has been involved for the last four years in the city of Providence to help develop and then now to help implement Providence's climate justice plan. And this is really a first-in-the-nation plan that a municipality has done at that level to really center climate justice as the way that they are going to deal with issues of environment and sustainability. And the process through which this happened was very, very different. It started with the, the city, but a strong partnership with community groups. And ultimately, the development of the Racial and Environmental Justice Committee of Providence that worked with city officials to create the policy framework for how sustainability and how climate and how environmental policy was going to be done in the city of Providence, and then worked with them to write the climate justice plan, which was rolled out at the end of 2019. And now they're in the process where they are taking one of the key pieces of that climate justice plan, how they're going to develop what they call these green justice zones that are in the areas of their ports. And that process, which has been going on for the last eight months, is community members and public officials at the city and state level coming together to talk about what's the process for governing and decision-making around what happens at those ports? What are the priorities for what needs to happen at those ports? And what things need to be addressed? It's an entirely different kind of policymaking process where from the get-go, community members are directly engaged in making and then implementing policy. And what you see come out of that is a very different agenda and set of, of priorities. And, you know, I think it's, it's really exciting. I love talking about the, the Just Providence framework. Because when you look at this, this document, which you can find on the City of Rhode Island's website, that you see that, that they're starting and the values that they're trying to move toward in policy, you know, one of the first ones they talk about are racially equitable and just providence moves us toward el buen vivir. And they say buen vivir means that we can live well without living better at the expense of others. Frontline communities of color have a fundamental human right to clean, healthy, and adequate air, water, land, food, education, transportation, safety, and housing. We must have just relationships with each other and with the natural world of which we are apart. That kind of framing is radically different from the way that we normally frame and even talk about public policy.
So how would you apply participatory policymaking in Montgomery County?
Yeah. I think there are a lot of opportunities. I mean, I think we can be doing this at every policy level. And basically, anywhere where we're trying to develop a plan, first of all. And we've, you know, we have a couple of those that are in their draft stages right now. The county has released their draft climate action plan. The planning board has also released their draft of Thrive Montgomery 2050, the, the comprehensive general plan. And those kinds of processes are places where we can shift from the model of communities giving input to communities actually participating directly in the formation of policy. Everything from determining what are the important things that we need to be addressing to setting out, you know, in the case of land use planning, where do we want to be doing different things in our county? And having community members directly discuss and decide that within themselves in collaboration with public officials and, you know, with public staff. But where community members are much more centered as the decision-makers.
Can you explain how that would actually work? I mean, I understand the input process and the criticism of it that you have. How would this new system be constructed and work?
Sure. So one of the examples that, that I can share is an example from Somerville, Massachusetts, where I used to live, of how Somerville did its comprehensive plan, which they called Summer Vision. This was back around 2009, 2010. And, you know, similar to Montgomery County, it was a process where, you know, after 40 years, we're going through and figuring out what our comprehensive plan needed to look like. And there was a creation of a, I think it was a 60-member steering committee. And this is for a community that's, that's less than a tenth the size of Montgomery County. But that was the size of, you know, steering committee that we felt we needed to have in order to really represent the various people in our community. And it included civic leaders, business leaders, but a lot of just residents, of which I was one. And we spent over a year digging in. The, the planning staff came and they presented us with a lot of data about what was going on in the city of Somerville. And then they basically asked us and they said, what are the things that we see happening in our city that we believe our comprehensive plan needs to address at this time? And we had multiple series of conversations in our steering committee group, as well as doing public, a series of public events to really surface those priorities with hundreds and hundreds of community members. And then we identified these six priority areas that we thought we needed to address. And then we spent the rest of that year delving in on each of those priority areas in working groups and saying things like, if we're going to talk about affordable housing, or if we're going to talk about development, where does high-density housing need to happen? Where does medium density? What, you know, how are we targeting that development? What do we need to think about in terms of the, you know, whether it's zoning or whether it's other regulations and, and laws that are either making it easier to achieve these goals around affordable housing or green space or transportation, et cetera, et cetera? And, you know, where are there things that we think we're going to need to shift? And that process was led by us as community members. It was a transformative thing for me to experience. And it's why I'm engaged in local politics now, is because I had the opportunity to have that level of direct participation in shaping the comprehensive plan of the place where I lived. And after that, I felt much more, I had a very different vision about how I could be involved in politics, in governance, in my community. And that has shaped my trajectory now to running for office because I believe deeply in local government as a result of that process specifically.
Well, so do, and you don't think Montgomery County has that? Because if you talk to the planning department, they will say that their process is approximately similar. What do you see is the difference and where, you know, what do you want changed?
So I think it's really in the details. And I think it's in the extent to which we shift community members from input to decision-makers. This is the big shift. And I think this is what doesn't tend to happen in, in policy processes in Montgomery County. We, again, we, we do a lot of collecting of input. But then when it comes to parsing that input, when it comes to figuring out what needs to be prioritized, when it comes to defining what are the actions that we need to take, we go back to that model of public administration that says, let the professionals figure this out. And we don't provide that opportunity for community members to actually know and see and be directly involved in what happens to their input afterwards. So input goes into kind of a black box. And you hope that on the other end, you get something that looks like or feels like it is connected to things that you said. But you don't know, and you don't know what's shaping that process. And you don't even really know who's, who are the people who are making those decisions.
So I agree with the description that you've made, right? I agree that there's a black box approach to this. But it looks like a black box to those that are not involved. There are people in Montgomery County that are involved in these various decisions, right? So for example, you came from this, from the planning perspective. I came to local community service from the PTAs, right? And I felt similarly as you do that there is a black box. But I felt that I was, you know, there and somehow the wishes of other people who were with me predominated and I lost. But those are the wishes of my fellow residents. You don't feel like that?
No, I think those are the wishes of the, the residents who are able to participate in the process at the levels that we require. And we don't talk about what the structural barriers are to participation. We don't talk about whether it's linguistic barriers, transportation barriers, economic barriers. The, the barriers of whether or not people come in and their lived experience is respected. So, you know, it's interesting. I, I, an anecdote I often talk about when I talk about the, the difference between how we think about planning is in transportation design. Public transit is one of my, my big areas. And I talk about, like, if you want to design a good transportation system, you absolutely want transportation engineers who can tell you how the vehicles run and how the rails run and the, you know, the electric systems and all of that. Just as importantly, you want the single parent who has to take their three kids and their groceries on public transit to help you understand the specific details of how public transit needs to work. We consider one of those things expertise and the other one, nice input. But the expertise of a transit user is just as essential to designing a good transit system as the expertise of a transportation engineer. But when you come into conversations, we don't treat people as if their lived experience counts as expertise that's as valuable as people with letters under their name. And that in and of itself is a kind of barrier. We like to talk in jargon and acronyms and things that make these processes less accessible to people because there's a fundamental perspective that says that what they bring is less valuable and is not as necessary as the people we make sure are at the table and the people we build these processes around. And this is, this goes to the root of what equity and justice actually mean. It's not just, hey, we've created this place, come if you, you know, come if you want to, come if you're able, and if people don't come, we just say they weren't interested. Equity and justice is shifting to create the conditions and to figure out what conditions need to be created so that everyone, regardless of their education status, regardless of their economic wealth, regardless of where they live, are actually able to bring their expertise into these processes because we value them enough to support their participation.
Well, so to me, you're talking about power.
Yes, this is absolutely a question.
And, and you're, and you're saying that the powerful are more influential. Yes.
Of course, but that's, I'm also saying that we have structured power so that certain people don't get to have influence. And equity and justice is about shifting the dynamics of power. And we cannot say that we are committed to equity and justice without actively shifting the dynamics of power. And, and we can't simply accept the dynamics of power as they are. We can't simply say, well, powerful people have more influence, so that's just the way it is. Because we know that that is based on a whole bunch of racist and sexist and classist structures that have existed over the course of our history and are still actively influencing how and whether people are able to participate. So if we say that we are public leaders or elected officials or public officials who believe in equity and justice, then it is incumbent upon us to shift power and to shift the dynamics of power.
Yes, agreed with everything, all of that. How do you do it?
I mean, I think, I think you, you do it. So one, you do it by actually spending a lot more time engaging with and deeply listening to the folks who currently don't have access to power, who are currently excluded from those systems. So, I mean, let's, we can talk about Thrive 2050 for a second. This is a process that got started before the pandemic, but a significant bulk of the public engagement work happened actively during a global pandemic where huge numbers of people in our community were, you know, had COVID, were dealing with illnesses of their family members, either here in Montgomery County or Maryland or elsewhere, were facing massive economic impacts, were having their livelihoods, were having their homes lost. That's not the time to do a public plan.
So do you want them to hold it off now and, and pursue it later on? Is that your proposal?
I mean, I think if we were really centering equity and justice, yes. I do believe that we would say, actually, we didn't have the time. And our community members, especially are the community members who have been most marginalized from power, who already don't typically have the time and the ability and the resources to go participate in a bunch of public processes, were even more under duress during the last year. And so there's no way that we were effectively able to get the level of participation that we truly needed from the, the, the full breadth of our community during that time.
Is that a demand that you would make in your campaign?
I don't know that that's a demand that we're making yet. I do actually know that when it comes to the I do actually know that when it comes to the Climate Action Plan, that a, a group of uh, black and indigenous and people of color community leaders have presented a letter to the county executive, to the Office of Sustainability, to the Chief Equity Officer, saying that we need to do exactly that with the Climate Action Plan. Because the Climate Action Plan is another one of these examples of a plan that was largely done without the participation, without the effective, active, like direct shaping of policy and defining the agenda, participation of commu- of communities of color in Montgomery County. And they have actually made a demand that they've outlined in this letter to say, this needs to be done again in a way that centers our communities in a way that much more effectively and meaningfully engages us in a policymaking process and allows us to define what the priorities are and even what the framework is for addressing climate and environmental issues in our county. Um, and I think that we are going to see more and more communities and community leaders making those kinds of demands when they see that public processes have not reflected their interests.
Where do you think participatory policymaking can be more effective? And where do you think it's less likely to be effective?
I, I mean, I actually think it's pretty effective in a lot of spaces. I think that some of the key places where we can begin to test this out, I think, are in the development of, of various kinds of action plans and land use plans. Um, I also think there is a huge opportunity in the development of legislation itself. And this is something that I am really excited to do if I'm elected as a council member is to use that same kind of process of sitting down with community members of saying, what is the agenda? What are the most pressing problems that we need to be addressing? What do we need to prioritize as we're looking at housing legislation, environmental legislation, economic development legislation? And then saying, how do we develop policy that specifically tangibly makes a difference on these issues? Engaging community members throughout the process of defining the problem, setting the agenda, identifying solutions, even helping people engage in the process of drafting policy language. Folks should know about this. That shouldn't just be a thing that's legalese, that goes to lawyers. This is our public policy. We should be able to make sure that we understand it and that we, that is created in forms that feel like they are clear to us as residents of the county. And then thinking about how are we going to monitor implementation? How are we going to evaluate this and make sure that it accomplishes the goals that we set? This is something that we're actually working to develop in our campaign right now, even in the development of my policy platform. There are areas of interest that I have based on what I know about the county, based on conversations that I'm already having with community members. But then in the deva- development of the details of our policy platform, I want to be modeling these exact kind of processes where we bring people together and we say, let's set this agenda, define the priorities, identify key solutions together. Because I believe that that is what we should be putting into place, um, certainly in the development of legislation.
So I don't know one elected political leader, not one who will say that they don't already do exactly what you just described. So given that claim, what is the mirror that you hold up to show the deficiency that you're talking about?
So I think the question isn't whether or not the people in power believe that they're doing enough. I think the question is whether or not the folks who have been excluded from power believe that the dynamics of power have changed. That's, that's the mirror. That's the evaluation standard. It's whether or not, if you're talking about um, SROs in schools, whether or not students and particularly students of color who are marginalized on multiple dimensions, feel that the process has adequately included them and that the outcomes of that process reflect their interests and what they've said is most important. If you're talking about economic development, it is about whether or not workers at all classes, but particularly low wage workers and small businesses, again, particularly small businesses that are run by folks of color, by immigrants, by folks from lower wage um, backgrounds are saying, this process actually reflects investment in me and that I feel that I have been actively engaged in determining what economic development looks like in Montgomery County. When you're talking about housing, it's whether or not folks who have lower incomes, larger family sizes are renting, say that I have been actively involved in the development of housing policy in Montgomery County. And I believe that what is happening in housing policy is actually supporting my ability to live here in Montgomery County. That's the metric. And again, typically what we do is we ask already powerful people whether they are happy with the current distribution and exercise of power. That's not how you get to equity and justice.
Okay. You said participatory policymaking is time consuming and, you know, costly. Because it is time consuming. People, in my experience, a lot of people, especially the, you know, single mother with three kids with groceries uh, on a transit um, train, right? Do not have the time to engage in a costly, time-consuming process. And that's been my experience, even with PTAs um, in schools that have high farm rates, for example. Right? It's been very difficult um, to get people to refocus on the commun- community service aspect of this. How do you think we can break through that?
Uh, I mean, you provide the supports, uh, so one, you provide the supports that make it possible for people to participate in ways that work for them. I mean, there are some really basic supports that we don't tend to provide effectively. Supports around making sure that wherever uh, meetings are happening is transportation accessible. Supports where if you are asking people to meet during dinnertime, that you are providing food. Supports where if you are um, asking people to meet at the times that they need to be with their kids, you are providing adequate childcare. And that's not even to count like language justice support to make sure that all the members of our community can effectively participate in a language that they're comfortable with. Those are four very basic things that we typically don't consider very effectively when we're asking people to participate in public process. Also, how do you value people's time? A lot of the folks who tend to show up at these things are either people who are economically secure and don't have to worry about the value of their time or people whose jobs it is to do this. So one of the things that, that um, was advocated for in setting up the Policing Advisory Commission here in Montgomery County was the provision of stipends for people with lower incomes, recognizing the economic burden that that represents. So though, that's another thing that we can be doing if we actually want to create the supports for people to participate. And then the other key thing is that people participate when they think their participation is going to matter. No one in their right mind would spend their hours on a process where their input goes into some black box and then they have no idea whether what they just did is going to make a difference in, in the way that policy impacts their lives. That is a losing proposition, but that's what we offer to people in public process right now. My experience has been that when people see that they get to be decision makers and that what they do in that process has a direct and significant impact on public policy, they will invest in the long haul for years. And in fact, we have a long tradition in this country and even in this county of marginalized people organizing for policy that matters to them and fighting that fight for decades. So it is actually not accurate to say that people won't invest in extended policy processes. It's just that people won't invest in extended policy processes where they're not supported and they're not respected and they can't have any assurance that their participation matters.
Okay, another wrinkle. I know this about power, that it perpetuates. So when you create a new system, the powerful capture that system, the new system that you've created. How do you avoid that?
So, I mean, I, I'm gonna start at the roots of this. First, we have to organize to put people into power who actually believe in sharing power, who believe in power with, not power over. Um, and so, you know, we're in an election cycle right now. Obviously, I'm running for office. There are other people running for office. I think this question of how people actually intend to concretely share and redistribute power is a key question um, that folks should be, should be asking in our community. Again, especially if we say that we are committed to racial equity and social justice. Huge question there is how are you shifting power to accomplish those things if we, if that is something that we believe in? Um, and I think, so you have to, you do have to start there and there's some of that that we, that we really have to do. Um, but then when people are committed to shifting that power, it's also about building systems of both support and accountability around them. Systems where we say, okay, how are we working with, how are we governing with this public official to make sure that the things that we talked about in terms of public process, the things that we talked about in terms of participatory policymaking, in terms of power sharing, are actually happening? Elected officials need that support. And this is another thing that's actually really terrible about the way that we think about public administration is that we send folks over and we're like, go make decisions. They should reflect what we need. But then there's some adjustments that we have to make as residents of our communities to say, I actually need to be engaged in a different relationship with that public official where we are working together. Because that person, no matter how brilliant they are, no matter how experienced they are, doesn't know everything about everything. I will never pretend that my one unique and beautiful brain holds all the knowledge that is necessary to make public policy for a county of a million people. And anyone who says that, that they can do that isn't telling you the truth. What I know is that when I engage and when I support people to be participants with me in governance, we have a much better chance at getting much better public policy outcomes. And that is my goal. And quite frankly, a lot of those public policy outcomes, there's something that you said about, you know, public processes being expensive. They're not nearly as expensive as an eviction crisis where thousands of Montgomery County residents are going to be without homes. Homelessness is incredibly expensive. The expense that it costs to public services, the expense that it costs to public education, the expense that it costs to our economy, that's expensive. So when I talk about participatory policy, I talk about not having to do processes over because we didn't do them effectively the first time, which again is also expensive. And I talk about making sure that we get policy outcomes that present, prevent devastating and also expensive outcomes for our communities.
Well, Brandy Brooks, thank you and good luck in the campaign.
Thank you so much, Sunil. It's been a pleasure.
That was Brandy Brooks from Montgomery County Council at Large. You can find out more about her at brandyformontgomery.com. You can follow her on Twitter at Brandy4Moco. Use the number four instead of the word four. Music for this episode comes from Carol Levchenko, an Arlington singer songwriter who is the choir director in Centerville High School in Fairfax County, Virginia.